We're going to call the meeting to order. It's October 12th, 11:30. We're here in the Murgesboro Airport. If you'll bow your head with me and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Father, I thank you for this day. Lord, I thank you for the individuals that are at this table and the individuals in the audience. Lord, we have so many things to be thankful for. Pray for those needs that are spoken and unspoken, that you give us wisdom today, that you give us guidance, Lord, to make the best decisions for our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge leaves us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item one has been moved off of the consent agenda, so you have two items on your consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
The second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
You have the minutes of the August 18th meeting through the September 22nd meetings. Any additions or additions to the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into action items. You have Resolution 22R-23 for other post-employment benefits. Employee services.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. As we were planning for our open enrollment this year, we're looking at where we are as a city and particularly how the economy is doing. So I just want to reflect on something. We all know inflation has been going up lately. It's been going up and down. Currently it's at 8.3%. The graph you see on the screen here, the far right shows you all items of as far as not related to food and energy, which is the far right, the green bar. In the middle is the dark one, which is the energy and then food. But what I wanted to focus on is the one on the far left, which is the red bar, which is 8.3% inflation. And that's affecting everyone. So as we were thinking about our open enrollment, it was a group that we have not thought about in a while. And that really is the retirement group. That is the group where, for whatever reason, over the last few years, we have not put a lot of thought into doing something for them. So we said, well, why not actually do something for them this year? So when you think about retirees, they're never forgotten, but sometimes they're never remembered when we do certain things. So we looked at certain benefits, and those benefits are dental and our vision benefits. When you look at certain studies, studies have shown that when you do good oral hygiene, it helps prevent chronic diseases such as heart disease, strokes, and things of that nature. And then when you look at vision, as we begin to age, often we can't see as well as we did when we were young. So if you have good vision insurance, we thought that why not put something in place for our retirees and our eligible LTD. So what we're proposing this year, effective 1-1-2023, is that we offer those who have a desire to actually choose benefits related to dental and vision. And we look at the categories for these individuals. It's about 31 retirees and LTDs are currently receiving our benefits. We feel that if they chose to select these options, it would be low cost to the city. It would be all retirees paid. We figured that maybe 100 of them might pick up this choice. When you look at the cost, the cost for individual is almost $25. For family coverage is around $69. And then when you look at vision, vision care is much lower. It's only $4.46 and then $8.93. So what I'm requesting, what the staff is requesting this morning, is that you approve Resolution 22R-23 to provide post other post-employment benefits to our retirees and our eligible disabled employees, beginning effective 1-1-23. So I'll pause for a moment. I'm available for any questions or comments you have regarding this resolution.
Any questions? You're needing a motion for this.
We need a motion, you're right.
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
The second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Thank you.
Thank you, Randolph. All right, we have item six, changes to health benefits for 2023.
Yes. Continuing conversation regarding open enrollment. Back early this year, back in June, council approved for us to increase premiums because our benefits consultants advised us that insurance is going to go up for 2023, a projector over almost $2.1 million. So we're here to figure out a way, how do we cover this cost? So what council approved is for us to increase the premiums for our employees. On the low end, it'll be $2.27 for weekly payroll, and then biweekly, it would be $20.49 for biweekly payroll. So we figured that, okay, that's not enough. What else can we do? I mentioned earlier about inflation, costs is going up. So we're asking for council to look at this as well, the following. Three different categories, three additional items. One is to increase co-pay for prescriptions. If we do that, that's about a $46,000 savings for the city. We're asking for a $5 increase for the co-pays. When you look at the screen here, generic prescription, no cost increase there for co-pays. When you go to preferred, a $5 increase there, and non-preferred, $5 there as well. Go up from $10, $35 to $55 for those three categories. We also added a fourth tier. The fourth tier is for specialty drugs. If someone uses a, needs a specialty drug, the cost would be up 20%, up to a maximum of $75 for that particular drug. Again, if we do this, the savings for the city would be a little over $46,000 to help mitigate that $2.1 million that we're looking at for 2023. Another option we looked at is narrowing the pharmacy network. If we do this, what we're asking is to exclude Walgreens in our network. Doing so would save the city about $164,000 or more. The 164 is the low end. We've been told that it could go up to almost a half a million dollars. You might ask yourself, well, who's going to be impacted if we make this change? Those who actually use Walgreens today. Well, if we exclude Walgreens, 61% of our beneficiaries still will have a pharmacy within one mile of their home. Another 74% would have a pharmacy within five miles of their home. So the change here would be a change in where you go to your pharmacy. A little inconvenience, but you're looking at between 164 to almost a half a million dollars in savings if we make this change. Special note at the bottom of the screen here, the General Assembly in Nashville passed a bill that goes into effect 1-1-2023. So that if we do not make this change now, this opportunity will never be there again because the General Assembly is saying that plans cannot exclude a pharmacy after 1-1-2023. So if we make this change, it would go into effect 12-1-22 of this year. So that's another option in order to save money. We're looking at another 164. Last but not least, our pharmacy benefit manager, Excler, has offered a three-year contract, a three-year contract to our current plan. Right now, it is scheduled to expire on 1-1-2023. They're asking that if we agree to a new contract, they're going to lower our administrative fees from $3.60 to $3 per employee per month. That savings is about $30,000. In addition to that, they're offering a pharmacy fund of about $25,000 that can be added to cover pharmacy costs throughout the year. So combined, if we amend the contract, we're looking at about $55,000 in savings by doing this. And we have a good relationship with this organization, and they're very responsive, and we feel very confident about this opportunity. So when you look in summary, here's what we're looking at that we're proposing. These categories here, from increased co-pays all the way down to narrowing the pharmacy network, a savings of about $265,000. So with that said, the request from staff is the following. One, increased co-pays, as I mentioned earlier, would be $5 per prescription. Narrow the network by excluding Walgreens. And then last but not least, is to amend the contract with Excler RX. I'm available for any questions or comments you have about our proposals.
What's the, just out of curiosity, why Walgreens?
Walgreens, that's a great question.
Are they out of network with this particular PBM?
No, they are in a network with them. But of all the pharmacies that we currently have onboard, they are the most expensive.
From a dispensing fee?
Yes.
Okay.
They don't offer the discounts that Walmart, Kroger, PBX, I mean, Publix offers. That's the reason why.
Okay. Motion.
Second.
The second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item, thank you, Randolph, thanks for your hard work. All right, we'll move to item seven, community investment program funds transfer.
Thank you. We have a housekeeping item to reallocate CIP savings from the recreation maintenance building and mountain bike trails to cover the construction costs for the boardwalk repairs at the Greenway. Council approved the contract for those repairs at the January 27th meeting, and we just need to officially transfer those CIP funds. I'm happy to answer any questions and recommend approval.
So moved.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Town Creek Phase Two Track Five acquisition. Mr. Huddleston.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Today we have for you the acquisition of Track Five for the Town Creek Phase Two project. That is the location of the AIA Insurance Building at 205 Northwest Broad Street. That's a correction from the agenda. We had it listed as 201, but the correct address is 205. Our appraisal for this property was $425,000, $425,000. The owner submitted a request for administrative settlement of $42,500, which is 10% of the appraised value. And under the federal and state acquisition process, we can consider administrative settlements of up to 10% of the appraisal. In this case, we believe the administrative settlement is appropriate so that the city can avoid the effort and time and effort and cost for condemnation. And so staff recommends that we acquire this property for a cost of $467,500 plus the customary closing cost, which we estimate to be at about $3,500. We have this statement in from the closing attorney, and we'll be ready to close on this property with council's approval from the general fund when we authorized a couple meetings ago, property acquisition and demolition from the general fund for Town Creek Phase Two. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do we typically take out owner's title insurance?
We do. We get a owner, we get a title, company's opinion of title, and we took out title insurance and the value of the acquisition.
Okay.
These properties are being acquired with general funds, which give us the flexibility in the future for those fee simple ownerships to be able to reutilize them, declare them as excess or surplus property, or enter into other contractual relationships on them. And so having opinion of title is important to us there.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Move to the MED Pension Plan Amendment.
I think I'm going to present that.
MED Pension Plan Amendment?
You'll recall when we transferred the Electric Department to Middle Tennessee Electric that the pension plan could not follow because it was a Urisa plan, a plan, it was not a Urisa plan. It's a governmental plan which is accepted from the federal law, Urisa law. And so because Middle Tennessee is not a governmental entity, they could not take our plan. So we have it with the, the idea when we kept the plan was that it would be transferred, the liability would be transferred to annuities at some point in time. It's a very small plan, and it's time to do that. It's not unusual for plans of our size. And so we're working on doing that now. In addition, to facilitate that transfer, we're also trying to narrow the plan down by offering lump sum payments to vested deferred individuals, individuals who are vested in the plan, but they're, they're not taking their retirement benefits right now. So offer them a lump sum. Can be an advantage to them if they handle it appropriately, and it's an advantage to the plan and to the city. So we're going through that process right now. To facilitate those, we need to make changes to the pension plan itself. And these were taken to the pension plan committee last week, and that was approved. And so they're before the council now to allow for the lump sum and the termination of the plan in March 31st, which aligns with our dates for transferring the plan. If you have any questions, Aaron can answer those.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item 10, ordinance 22037. This is a fiscal year 23 budget amendment ordinance. This is second and final reading.
Mayor, y'all have a few changes included in the budget amendment that need to be considered first. They include the ARPA grant expenses, the MED pension termination costs. We've also included the revenues and expenses for the fire and police grants that y'all just approved. Fire Station One's ramp repairs have been updated to include a second failing ramp. Community Development is requesting an increase to their headcount for a director position, and grant revenues and expenses are included for airport as well. So the overall impact will decrease unassigned fund balance by close to $9 million. Assigned fund balance will decrease by $3.5 million, and restricted fund balance will go down by just a little over $10 million. I'm happy answering questions, but recommend approving these changes before approving the budget amendment on second reading.
Just wanted to motion for an amendment to the, to ordinance 22037, and then we'll consider the ordinance.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second for the amendment.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now we'll consider ordinance 22037 as amended.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll now move to overall Creek Forest Main bid.
Mayor, of course. Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. A little bit of business, solid waste discussion. We did have overall Creek Forest Main bid extensions come in on September 15th. We had four bids. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder was from Cleary Construction, $8,439,000. This kind of shows you where the overall Creek pump station is, and the green line goes directly to our Water Resource Recovery Facility. So it basically hugs Broad Street, costs is under 840, gets back on Broad Street, and then goes through the Hoard Farm. Just to kind of give you an idea of the importance of this project, the current as-is condition, this is from our 2022 sewer allocation, I'm sorry, our 2021 sewer allocation report, we just had just over 3,600 sewer connections available in the overall Creek basin, overall Creek basins west of the interstate, very high-growth area. Pump station, which is being upgraded now, we're looking at a 15,100 connections as part of that upgrade. So it really puts us in a good spot for growth on the west side of the city. But the Forest Main is required to connect the pump station to the Wharf. Again, this is kind of giving even a bigger scale view of our 2021 report. We showed about $47.4 million to kind of get to a 2B condition that sets the city up for future sewer connections. Wet weather upgrade project that we think is going to come in a little bit high, we have not bid that yet. But you can see that our anticipated 12.3 million for overall Creek pump station and Forest Main came in at 13.6. So we're really, instead of the 47.4, we're around 52 million in upgrades at this time. But I wanted to kind of give you that 30,000-foot view so you can understand the importance of this pump station upgrade and the Forest Main. So I'm available for any questions or comments, but we would recommend awarding the Forest Main bid to Cleary Construction.
Darren, just to confirm, we're just voting for the bid, which is 8.4 million, or it's changed?
It has, no, it's the 8.4 million is the bid.
Okay. But the combined bid, the project in total, 3.6?
Project in total is 13.6, yes, ma'am. We've already approved the pump station upgrade.
Okay, perfect. I'll make a motion to approve the bid.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, time to talk trash.
All right, again, again, thank you for the opportunity. It feels like it's been a long, long time coming to talk about all the input that you all provided me through the triple bottom line assessment. I want to thank you all for that time and effort that you put into that. I know it's something that's very critical to our future, and I appreciate you all being thoughtful in that exercise. Just a reminder, what the triple bottom line is, is that it's a framework that incorporates environmental, social, and financial considerations. It's sometimes referred to as the three Ps, or people, planet, and profits. It just allows us to look at other dimensions of performance versus strictly financial, which is primarily, I think, what we look at. This is kind of the framework. We have the environmental sustainability. I kind of wanted to give you the diagram just to remember the depth of the subcategories of the resource efficiency, climate impact, local environmental impact, and then the social components, safety and health, public perception, and economic development. And the financial, which are the direct cost, savings potentials, and risk and reliability. Why use a multi-criteria analysis? Well, this is to facilitate meaningful collaboration through being transparent, so there's no black box, black box processes where it's unclear how conclusions have been reached. It does allow us to enter those other considerations from climate, social, and public welfare implications. It's allows to be consistent across all options, be as simple as reasonably possible, and accommodate quantification where possible. So here's how we scored. Counsel, this is aggregate, this is me averaging everybody's input, but your, the weightedness was 31% environmental, 36% social, and 33% financial. This is kind of a bar graph, the green. I kept everybody anonymous so that nobody really knows who scored what. But green is, the environmental score is the blue, the social and the gold are the financial scores. So you can see that there was some variation among the council members to make up those averages. I did this graph, and I really, this is kind of the ranking, so you can kind of see here with the pointer, five of council members did rank social as being their highest priority. Two, it was financial, and then there were three council members that said environmental was their highest priority. Then you can kind of see the second priority and then the last priority. So now we get into kind of these subcategories, these subcriteria within the categories. On environmental, you had a range of 3.9 to 4.4, five being highest priority, one being the lowest priority. On the social, you had a 2.7 up to a 4.4. Economic development actually being the lowest priority in the whole deal. And then the financial, you had a 3.4 up to 3.9. So how does all this weigh in? Well, let me go through the, this may be a little better way to see it. So these are just ranking them from lowest to highest. As you can kind of see, economic development being lowest. Then you've kind of got the financial are kind of paired together. Then you start getting into some environmental, and then you've got safety and health impact and local environment impact ranked the highest of the bunch. So when we take these criteria scores and apply them to the weighted factors, it changes it just a little bit. So let's look at the financial. You really have 72.9 points, which bumps that down to 32.3. The health, or the public impact, or I'm sorry, the social impacts bumps that up to about 33. And actually, the environmental ends up scoring the highest, just because you can see a 3.9, 4.3, 4.4, when you applied that to the spreadsheet, it actually weighted environmental just a little bit above. But it's still, it's still gone close to a third, a third, and a third. Pretty interesting. So that makes a max score of 225.6. So now let's talk about the different options real quick. You know, we talked about 0% diversion, which means we don't, we basically take all of our trash to another landfill. We just transfer it, maybe referred to as kicking the can down the road. We talked about Pratt, which is a clean Murph. We talked about a 40% diversion of materials. That's if everyone goes to a curbside recycling program, which is fairly expensive. We talked about a dirty, Murph stands for Materials Recovery Facility. We did talk to Waste Management about a building product that they call Everboard. It doesn't require any curbside recycling, but it does, it does that mechanically. The only issue there is that they, they're, I think they said it was going to be a $175 million investment, and they were going to want every bit of trash generated in Middle Tennessee coming to that facility. And then the waste away option, it's a 90% diversion, 70% conversion to a biomass fuel. I sent you all a little report out where we had just visited Boozy. It's a kiln in Chattanooga that did a test, 200-ton test burn with their fuel. And also, I sent out a previous memo that talked about a renewable natural gas option where you can get some really nice federal subsidization through, it's called RINs credit, a Renewable Identification Number System.
Darren, the numbers that you had given us just for our new council members, under the Pratt or the clean Murph, whether it's Pratt or any other... the Pratt or the clean Murph, whether it's Pratt or any other, what is that initial capital and yearly cost for us to go to a curbside recycling program?
Well, I think it basically doubles our current operating expense, which is around 6 million, I think around $6 million to do the curbside collection. So I've got, I've got what it would do to the effect of the monthly fee on a subsequent slide. But you're basically having to get a whole new set of fleet of vehicles, you're having to put new carts out in front of everyone's driveway because you can't do, you'd have to have it separated. And that's a problem where everybody's going with that, where you have to get all new drivers as well, so a whole new staff to collect it. The issue with single-stream recycling is everybody's kind of getting away from it because there's such high contamination rates. So most of the stuff that you end up collecting in a single container, you end up having to landfill it because it's contaminated in some way because it's dirty. I mean, cardboard, or the people are putting things into the recyclables that shouldn't be there. So if we have an operating budget of around 8 million now, I think, that includes, I think that includes about, one point, does that include the debt service? Okay, well, if it's an $8 million operating budget, then we're, I think 6 million's a fair number on recycling. And I think that's reflected in the, in the fee I'm about to show you coming up. So really quick, to take a lot of the, I gave you the detailed tables and the detailed analysis in your memo, but this is kind of the PowerPoint version. On the diversion and climate impact, obviously, the biomass fuel waste away option is the highest rated, just because you do have a 90, you're only putting 10% of your trash into the landfill, 70% is being converted to fuel. You've got some water vapor that's being evaporated, and you do collect about 7% or 8% in metals. You recover a lot of the metals and the aluminum, and those can be sold. Dirty Murph, clean Murph, again, you've got a 40% diversion there, so we're giving that a fair score. And then transferring to another landfill, 0% diversion is the worst. I've got one here that's just kind of out-of-county trash and traffic, actually transferring to another landfill, and the waste away option are the best because you aren't reliant on any outside county or outside, reliant on any regional trash coming in. The clean Murph, I think they would be bringing in outside recycling materials, and the dirty Murph would be the worst in this case because it would, they would require every bit of trash they could get a hold of, you know, within probably a two-hour drive. Public perception, again, I think clean Murph and transfer to another landfill, those options would be viewed favorably, fair. The dirty Murph, again, I gave that a bad score because, again, it would require so much trash coming from out of county that I just think that would be a, the public would not perceive that well. Waste away, again, got a very high score because it just, it doesn't rely on any outside trash, and you're getting rid of, you're making a beneficial fuel from it. Direct costs, we said they're all about the same since we're looking at investing the same amount in each, each option. Risk and reliability, we gave the dirty Murph a little bit higher because it is a, it's backed by Waste Management, which is a multi-billion dollar corporation. Gave the transfer to another landfill a little bit of a poorer, poorer score because, again, you have no control over trucking costs, you have no control over tipping fees, and you're somewhat subject, and the way things are going right now, these mega landfill sites, once they close, you're looking at significant distance to get to the next one. On the, on the waste away option, I don't think that you're looking at much risk if we go that route because we will have contracts and development agreements in place before we do anything. Maybe just gave it a little bit on the reliability score, even just because there's not one in operation currently right now. The one in Morrison has had five-plus years of ongoing, continuous operation, and I know I've read several engineering reports that it's not, there's nothing in a waste away facility that's risky or unreliable. It's just a lot of, it's going to be a manufacturing process that, with air knobs and shredders and different things. So this is how it scored out. So the biomass fuel did just kind of, it won significantly just because of the weightedness on the environmental and the social. But you can kind of see the scores there. This was in the report that we sent out, too. So how does it affect the solid waste fee? This is kind of my, right now, where we should really be to recover costs, we should be at $15 per month. We're currently charging 7.5, so we're really only recovering about half, 50% of our current expenses. But if we went to another landfill, it adds about another $110 a ton, which is about $9 per month. So that would go from, instead of us really needing to charge 15, we'd need to go to 24. If we went with a clean Murph, this is with curbside recycling, that takes us to 27.5, so you can kind of see going from a current 15 to the 27.5, it's the most expensive option. If we sold the biomass fuel to Boozy in Chattanooga, you're looking at about a $4.50 increase from the 15. And then the RINs credit, if the projections and the pro forma do work out, you're only talking about another dollar per month. Now, these are, I did these pro formas based on maybe the city being the owner, operator, contractor. I want to hedge a little bit here and say, you know, if we, if there's a lot of private financing and contract operations that we, we have on an outside entity doing that for us, 20% may be too much, honestly, just based on the current pro forma. I went over with Craig this morning. But I'd say, you know, add 20% or so if we think we're going to let a private, get it fully privately financed. But still, it's more competitive, it's a better, it's a better solution, I think, than landfilling or the clean Murph. I don't have the dirty Murph up here because they never really got me any of the financial data stuff that I needed to plug in. They just never, never got back with me. So next steps, I think based on, on the way you, the weightedness you all provided and the scoring that we put together, that we want to recommend going into a development agreement for design, construction, and operation of 150,000-ton per year waste away processing facility. We are looking at an allowance, maybe not going into the anaerobic reactor process yet for the renewable natural gas, but the pro forma is really, really strong to go that route. So I would anticipate if we go this route, we would be looking at creating that bio, that fuel or that biogas and clean it into the renewable natural gas standards. So that's going to require, again, a lot more study and looking at those pro formas, public-private partnership, identify potential contract operators, long-term disposal contract, discuss disposal options with other entities inside Rutherford County, maybe start talking about interlocal agreements. Review any potential city code modifications for flow control. We generate right now about, as a city, about 50,000 tons per year. That waste away facility to really operate at its ideal condition needs 150,000 tons per year. I know the county's around 50,000. The convenient, when I say the county, the county convenience centers and the schools are about 50,000 tons per year. Our residential pickup, and we do do some commercial pickup, is about 50,000 tons per year. Rutherford County as a whole is around 250,000. When you talk private haulers and the reports that they submit to TDEC that go to Middle Point, we generate over 250. So there's enough, there's enough trash in Rutherford County by far to supply the feedstock to one of these facilities. We just have to make sure we get about 2/3 of that, of the trash inside the county going to this facility. And then again, I've got a little thing here about researching, research co-mingling anaerobic reactor. Once you create the gas of this stuff, you actually have what's called digest state. There's some leftover material. Talk about co-mingling that with brush and limb and maybe even potential, I don't have it in the pro formas as it being worth anything right now, but there's a potential it could be, could be sold for fuel. All right. Implementation timeline, if we get a development agreement by end of November, 14 months to basically get a shovel-ready project with design and contracts, flow controls, any interlocal agreements. Look at a 24-month construction period, have something ready to go by end of 2026. And anticipated closure of Middle Point is July 1, 2027. I know there's a whole lot of discussion that that may be over, we may, we may not have estimated that, that may be much earlier, right? I've been here in 26 months, 30 months now, just based on some of the activities they have going on at the landfill. But all the reporting says we would be well ahead if we got something going by 2026. I want to bring this up just to kind of give everybody some, maybe some comfort in how we got about this. GBB was a vision document back in 2016. There was a solid waste advisory commission that was created by the county and Mayor McFarland, and I think there was multiple meetings, Kirk, Mr. Wade. $250,000 on this report. They, I guess what they recommended was a north and a south transfer station starting in 2024. Obviously, those transfer station costs are not realistic in these days and times, but a transfer station is you dump truck, you take the garbage out of our residential trucks, you put it into a semi hauler, and then you take it to another landfill. But in 2030, they actually talked about a mixed waste processing facility, and that's what RDF is, a refuse-derived fuel. Waste away is not a refuse-derived fuel, but it is a biomass fuel that's a coal or a wood equivalent. So in effect, we're really kind of following some of the recommendations of that vision document that was spent so much time on by this community. So if we're looking at a south transfer station, if you can kind of perceive it this way, really all we're doing is a city and public funds or public investment would be a transfer. Private investment would, in essence, let's just say, upgrade that facility to a waste away plant that would create this fuel. So we're not, when we talk about building a waste away facility, we're not talking about the city footing the whole bill. We're talking about putting, being an investor, potentially, or not. We talked this morning about maybe letting private, the private sector finance the whole thing, and we would just be a customer. There's a lot of ways to do it. This is what we were talking about over the next 14 months. We need to come to an agreement and get everything in writing. But in your mind, if you can just understand, private investment is really pushing this thing because the RINs credit or the renewable natural gas or selling it to a cement kiln, the private investment side is taking that risk, not the public sector side. The county, I know, has been talking about a north transfer station, and that's rather than, again, in conjunction with what GBB saw. I would just say this, if private investment determines that maybe a north transfer station can get converted to a north, potential north waste away facility, I would think the county would be very interested to talk. I think when we first started talking with Republic, that's what we were trying to get them to do. Hey, build a Materials Recovery Facility, a dirty Murph, and you guys take the risk and build it and recover our recyclables and give us a good deal. The only problem with all that was, they, again, for Republic to do that, it was going to be a significant investment, and they were going to want trash coming in from everywhere out of the county. And I think it's been vocalized pretty well or documented pretty well now at this point, that taking in everybody's trash outside of Rutherford County is not something that this council wants to see. But private investment's driving this train to some degree, well, really, to the sole degree, it's being driven by private investment. So just wanted to leave you with that note and that thought, and see if anybody's got questions or comments. Sorry for the long presentation.
Great information.
For just the city of Murfsboro, you said Rutherford County's 250,000 tons a year. What is it just for the city?
Well, that's a good question. What we can, what we document or what we know, what we pick up with our solid waste fleet is about 50,000 tons per year. So that's residential and some commercial. There's going to be actually more, a lot of the commercial entities have private, private haulers, right, private people that come in and pick up. So we don't know that, that number, parse out what the private sector is picking up inside the city limits. We just kind of know that we're picking up about 50,000 publicly.
So in theory, if it's 50, let's just say it's 75.
Sure.
You build a 150,000-ton facility, how long will that potentially last us based upon our projected growth and where we're headed as a city?
Well, the 52,000 tons is something that I've projected through, I think, 20, either 2027 or 2028. If we, 150,000-ton facility based on our growth would last us 30 years if we just didn't, let's just say, if we, if we wanted to, as we needed more capacity and we kicked others out until we fully, I can't imagine when the city would, we'd have to be triple the size in order for us to generate 150,000 tons a year.
But if the process allows some scalability, so I mean, they could, we, the most efficient way for the plant to work is about 150,000 tons now. So we want to make sure we got somewhere 150,000 tons coming in. And then if we were to continue to grow and expand, you know, the scalability of the process itself can handle our, and some others. And then we can dictate sort of the flexibility on the commercial side and different things, how much is coming in, just by using the tipping fee as a, as a monitor to increase or decrease capacity.
So talk about that flow control. If we've got 50, and like Austin said, if we, if we could estimate that there may be another 25 tons through, through private, so we would, as a city, say under a flow control ordinance that if you're picking up trash inside the city, it goes to this facility?
That's something that we have to work through. I know Adam and I've talked to Greg.
Spring Hill's doing that, right? I mean, I had a conversation with a customer, or not a customer, but a resident the other day that manages communities in Spring Hill, and Spring Hill, you know, has a flow control ordinance where you have to use a specific franchisee in their, in their community.
The only thing I would say, too, is I would think that if our county is 250,000, and say in the next several years, we go to 300,000, well, that's, that's, that's two of these waste away facilities. So it could be that, all I would ask, since Chairman Kush is here from the County Public Works Committee, is that when they do a transfer station on the north side, that they just build it in a way that it could be, if everything works out and it shows, and the private sector does demonstrate a facility to be an attractive investment, that that north transfer station could be easily, you know, expanded to a similar facility. And then you've got your entire, then everybody in the, then, you know, that may be an opportunity for a solid waste authority for the county, everybody, the county just takes care of their, the county trash.
Could we, if we have this south transfer station, and for example, if we're at 50 to 75,000 tons, and we say that 150 is our max, if the county has a north transfer station, couldn't we work with the county and accept their trash to come to the south transfer station?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I would hope that that would be the case. If we go, if, if the private sector puts that investment into a transfer station, and we've got a long-term buyer contract, I would hope that, that, again, there would be some type of interlocal agreement that we could use the county's northern transfer station for just, you know, ease of tipping if we're on the north side of town, and they can transfer it to the south side for processing into the fuel. I would hope that would be how we come together.
Okay. What kind of odor or smell or anything does this process, I mean, it's hard to know since there's not one up and running, but is there any kind of odor emission or any kind of unintended consequence of this facility?
Well, I've been to the waste away facility in Morrison twice, and there's, it's enclosed. I mean, when you're inside and you're having active garbage, I mean, you're, you smell the garbage, but it's getting processed so quickly, it's not like there is a, an off-gassing, and it's getting out into the area. I mean, they've never had any complaints. I mean, when you drive up to the waste away facility in Morrison, you don't smell anything. And you, so you wouldn't smell anything here.
And even when we had our meeting there, we met in their conference room that is next to where they process the trash, and you couldn't smell the trash in their conference room next door to where they, they process the trash, so.
Is there a place where they, they're...
Is there a place where they, they're processing 150,000 tons?
Not currently, no. They've got the, I'll just say this because that's kind of been the big concern is maybe there's a risk there. That's why I kind of put up that last slide to say, you got to maybe look at it as though we're not really taking the risk on the waste away process. We're, private sector is taking the risk. But they've had a functioning plant in Morrison, Tennessee, where they had five years of consecutive ongoing manufacturing process, and they've not had any concern. I'll say this, because I asked, I took it, when I went to Boosie Chattanooga, I sat with Mark Brown, their CEO. And so I kind of quizzed him about, he probably got tired of my, tired of me asking him all these questions. But I asked him, I said, man, what if somebody comes in and a whole truckload of car batteries gets dumped into this thing? What, what happens? And he said, funny, you should ask. We've actually done that. The Corps of Engineers, he said, we would, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation would make them put a mass spectrometer on the end of their process. And then they went in and would do tests. They would dump paint, they would dump car batteries, they would, if you could think of it, they did it. And they said they would have to measure in 15-minute intervals the content of that, of that fuel that was coming out at the, at the back end. And they said you could see it, and Mark said you could see the blip that when we did something like that, but it never exceeded the limits that the TDEC placed on them. So TDEC finally went from requiring them to do it every 15 minutes to every hour, to every two hours, to every day. He said, right now, they don't even, they don't even have anybody certified on their mass spec because TDEC, TDEC certified their material is actually equivalent to mulch. You can go place this stuff on the ground and TDEC has no issues with it. So they've, they've done, they've done extensive, and the Corps of Engineers was, was arm-in-arm with them as they were going through these tests, and TDEC was making you monitor the results. So there's reports, you can, you want to go through a lot of material, there's a lot of reports there available.
Does, you bring your trash to this facility. I haven't been there, so I don't know. Does it go directly into the process or is there some staging area that could cause?
There's, there's a staging area and there's a little skid loader that somebody takes. And I'm sure based on the scale, it may be bigger than a skid loader if you're doing 150,000, but there's going to be somebody that, yeah, they dump it, there's a staging area where the garbage is, and then they scoop it, and then they just go, they go dump it into a bin.
It's dumped inside, though, right?
Inside, yes. It's not outside, it's inside the building. And there may be a more mechanized process, I don't, that they have under their sleeve. But no, right now, when you go there, there's somebody, it's inside, they dump it inside the building, a skid loader goes over and drops it in the hopper, and then it, I think it's about a 15-minute process from beginning to end.
20 minutes.
20 minutes.
So what percentage? What's the capacity of that facility? What are they?
50,000 tons per year at Morsel? It's about a third.
So what percentage of that can't be processed at that facility?
There's 10% that still has to be landfilled. So it's the, so if you want the breakdown, 10% is glass and aggregate, which is, has no value. So it has to be, so for every thousand tons, you will have 100 tons that still needs to be landfilled. Then you've got about 13% water vapor that gets evaporated. You've got 7% metals, which again, can be sold on the market. And there's actually in the pro forma, a revenue component for that. And then the 70% is what's created, what's converted into the fuel, and that's what you can sell.
So I mean, it is a true recycling process.
Yeah, it's the only process. I, I've had conversations with Steve Tate, another guy in my office, and is there anything that we've missed? Is there some other process out there that can do this, that fundamentally transforms trash into a real, and if I hadn't have sat down with Boosie, I mean, there's real buyers out there. They want to buy this stuff.
But this is not jet fuel.
No, this is not jet fuel. This is a coal or wood equivalent for the cement kilns. What we're looking at on the anaerobic process is taking that, that fuel, that coal or wood equivalent, putting it into an anaerobic reactor where the, there's a microbiological reaction that creates gas. You collect the gas, you purify it, and you get, you get to sell the gas, plus you get a 12x multiplier from the federal government on the value of that gas. If you want to look at RINs credits, it's pretty, pretty wild.
Those are my two questions.
Okay.
On the RINs credits, I mean, the anaerobic digestion's been done overseas in Europe for years, and it's done in dairy plants here in the States.
It's done in landfills. The Middle Point's about to start one.
So, I mean, if we're, if, this is where my mind went with it, like Chattanooga is running a lot of their larger equipment off of, off of LP gas.
Got it.
So is there a way that if we're producing this gas, that our, we buy a lot of fuel every year for all of our dump trucks and garbage trucks and all kinds of things? Is there a way that we, by processing this, could convert a lot of our equipment? I mean, I know we can do police cars and fire trucks and those things, but can we convert those to LP or to natural gas and then all of a sudden, we don't have to buy?
Yes, you're correct. So in order to get the RINs credit, the gas has to actually be used for transportation purposes. So that's the only way you get the, the 12x multiplier on that. So yes, there's two ways to do this. One is you can convert a lot of your vehicles to use natural gas to fuel them, and you get the credit. And then there's also, you can build a pipeline and, and introduce that, that renewable natural gas into the pipeline and get the credit.
So either way, you get the credit.
Either way, you get the credit.
Just to clarify, if the private sector does it, they're getting the credit, not us.
That's right, that's right. We're going to be, that's, that's a great, that's a great distinguishing viewpoint there because you're right. That private investors, they're the ones coming in to try to take that risk. We could just end up being a customer if that's how we want it structured. I think that's, I think, we're talking with Craig, all our goal is really is to keep the solid waste fee for our public as low as possible. And if private sector makes us some money on, on a good investment, good for them.
But that's my second question.
Okay.
That when, when, and I know we'll get into the pro formas more, we're trying to keep that solid waste fee as low as we possibly can. And once you get this facility paid back and going to where I think Sean was going, the payback, if you're using the RINs credits, goes to like 3.9 years or four years on a payback of that entire facility. And then after that four years, we, I would think, need to have something negotiated in there where we are true partners and not a customer if this thing that we see is going to work because that fee could go from $15 a month down to $5 a month if, if that, I mean, I guess that's where I'm going. Like I'm all for, I think a P3 is great. But at the same time, we've got a P3, I would argue a P3 three miles down the road, the landfill's a P3, we're taking all our trash there, they're getting all the profit.
Right.
Now, they're having to keep up with the liability as well, but if we know that this is renewable and it works, I don't want to short sight the taxpayer on having to pay that 15, $20 a month when we make it lower that number.
Right, I got you. Yeah, so, so I think that's working through, Craig's got a pretty good vision of a development agreement, and, and I think those kinds of, that kind of structure needs to be, you know, in that development agreement before, you know, we all start building one of these facilities. And if we can tie some type of return on investment or ROI to somehow come back and at certain levels. I will tell you this, just based on the, the, it takes a big swing in the, in the revenue to move that, that monthly fee substantially. And when I say substantially, even a dollar. I mean, you got to make another million, $2 million in revenue for us to reduce that fee for, for like one buck. So I don't think, when we get, we'd be happy to go through it, but it, the fee seems pretty stable, even regardless of what technology or where we end up going. We were always looking between, you know, 16 and 20, 26 bucks a month.
Even if we ever paid off a facility?
No.
Well, there's still, well, yeah.
There's the processing, there's the operating costs.
You have your operating costs, you have the costability, operating costs, and what we had talked about was, yes, building in some kind of modulation for what it would be coming back to the city and whether it be tipping fees or something else. I mean, the good thing about the RINs credit, here, as you said, the gas could be used by ours, but there's a way to separate. My understanding is, I'm not an expert on RIN, but my understanding is that it could separated actually from the gas can be sold financially. So we could use up the gas and put it in ours because we're using it for that, and there'd still be a financial benefit that disappeared. It's out there and it can be marketed. But yeah, there's a way, there's a way to make sure that at the end of the day, that we're getting a payback from.
Saying if, if there's the ability, if we know that the county needs a solution and we need a solution, that, that, and when I say county, that means Smyrna and Laverne and Eagleville as well. If there is the opportunity as we go through and we front load and pay this design fee, as we get down the road two years from now, it may make more sense for the solid waste authority with the municipalities and the county to say, we're going to do this ourselves. And those municipalities that are not charging a fee right now, that fee is a whole lot less.
Right.
We could do it almost as us being the private side and get those benefits.
A hundred percent. I, I would love to show you the, I've got the spreadsheet, I can show you the pro forma real quick if you'd like. I'm just kidding. It'll put you to sleep. Everybody's like, please, no. But Craig and I went through it, and I, I guess what I've get to is we've gotten, we've gotten so far down the rabbit hole on this pro forma, and trust me, when we sit down with waste away, it's going to be an open book situation. And if there's some, if there's some, if they, if this thing takes off or something gets paid off and it fundamentally transforms the pro forma, we're going to be right on top of it, and we'll, we'll get the best benefit for the city we can get, no doubt.
And you mentioned the other participation, the important thing there isn't, because the other cities don't collect. So the participation that we would really need from the other cities, quite frankly, is just flow control.
Flow control.
That's, and that's where authority would come in, and it makes a lot of sense, is that we're just dictating everything into, into the facility, and then it comes out in the fee because the fee will be adjusted according to what the facility can do. And then the private haulers, which is everybody else but us in the, in the community or in the authority.
With any agreement that y'all put together, if the private sector is going to use our bonding capacity, because the municipalities through revenue bonds are going to be able to borrow money a lot less expensive than what the private sector is going to be able to borrow money right now. So, I mean, my point is if, if we're going to leverage our bonds, even though the resident wouldn't be responsible for a revenue bond, then we need to be able to reap the benefit.
Sure.
And that's the negative, I would say, on this, what we're talking about right now, it's not been done. I mean, it's been done on a smaller scale in Morrison, but it's not been done on a larger scale. So if Murfreesboro is the, is the guinea pig.
Yeah.
Then I want us to make sure that anything that we do as we're going through this process, that we reap the benefits for the taxpayer moving forward because we are the first ones who are doing it.
Right.
And it's interesting, and we've been partially down the rabbit hole. I think we've got a lot more to go, but if we were to do revenue bonds issued under a public authority versus corporate, just going out in the corporate bond market, it doesn't move the needle hardly anything on the monthly fees. So then the question is, well, why would we take the risk even on a revenue bond, even though it's not a direct risk? Just let it go out in the corporate market, right? You know, it might go out unrated, I don't know, and it might be a pretty high interest rate, but it doesn't affect the fee all that much. And the other side to mitigate the risk is that how we participate into this will dictate that eventually that we end up with a transfer station. So if everything falls apart and there's a production plant that was paid for on corporate bonds and everything else, and it doesn't work somehow, and, you know, that doesn't appear to be, would be the case, but let's say it does, we end up with a transfer station, which is what we need anyway and where we'd be headed to, and then we can go back to hauling and shipping. Because that's really, that's really the ultimate plan B that we're forced to do, even though it's more costly. So we mitigate those risks quite a bit by doing that, and it doesn't really affect the monthly fee, but cents on the dollars.
It's a lot of apprehension getting on the P3 unless it's structured correctly. There's a lot of apprehension putting our, our destiny in someone else's hands.
Agreed.
And that's where, when we're saying it's a P3, it really needs to be private, public to make sure that we mitigate.
We hesitated on even the use of public-private partnership because you're right. What we're doing is taking the risk and kind of shipping it out. And Waste Away, to their credit, has said that they can work it either way. I mean, they'll, they'll work with us and finance it in different, different ways that makes sense to, to us. So I think that we can mitigate those risks quite a bit. And so that if, you know, what, the answer's going to be, what if everything fails? You know, what would happen? And so at the end of the day, we end up with an answer to that that makes sense.
Right.
I'll go ahead, Kirk.
So Craig, so, or whoever. So Waste Away has a facility that's a commercial operating facility, or is it a batch plant that does research or marketing? Because if you look on their website, it says research and marketing. So which one is it?
Well, the plant in Morrison, I guess, isn't, wasn't built to handle municipal waste. I think it handles some municipal waste out of, out of there, but, you know, they, but I will say this, the plant itself, and we've looked at this, and there's an engineering report, there's nothing in there that's, you know, it's not rocket fuel, it's not NASA, we're not talking, it's things in there that can be worked on, can be fixed if they need to be fixed. It's metal, it's, you know, it's mechanical processes, it's things like this. Now, they do have a proprietary system that, that does, does something, and they come out with a proprietary product. But the comfort level is, we're not talking about something that's just really new and conceptual. It's a lot of things put together that are able to produce this that make a lot of sense. So I don't know, did I answer your question? You're right. It's not, it's not in production right now.
At one point, it was production. I think it was intended for production, but I mean, but they do, they, they pretty much operate, I think, on a lot of batch basis now when they need to run these test burns or go, like for Boosie, you know, we had to, they had to process several hundred tons to go do that, that, that test burn.
So there's a few things that have moved from more research and development into what makes sense now in production, and that's the EPA certification that they had. And now, from a cost standpoint, when you start talking about the renewable natural gas and the RINs credit, you know, now it's like, that, that really helps tremendously on making this feasible.
So, so like Shane said, we would be the guinea pig for this. Where have they tried this elsewhere before? What other city have, have y'all looked at?
They're, I think they've got a contract with Bakersfield, Kern County, California. So they're, they're proceeding with that.
But it's not done yet.
No.
Or Washington State, because I got a call from a city councilman in Washington State.
I don't know of anything in Washington State, Mike.
We have a project under development in Marysville to lay the, to lay the prob. That's what's active in Washington State right now. We also have a contract to sell fuel to a cement plant in Washington State.
Okay. And just like everything else, I don't want us to spend something on an assumption and pro forma that we have no data on to move forward. I know we want to try to get what's best for account, Murfreesboro, but I want to have some concrete evidence before we start spending this kind of money. I think this is a big step for us, and we got to get it right.
Yeah, I agree. And the, you know, the initial investment, I think, would be, I think what's, what's being requested now is, is to have the facility designed. So it's not an insignificant request, but it is something that is the first step in going forward. The real cost of this, I think, is the build, construction of the plant. And that's where we, what we talked about earlier, and that's the mitigating the risk to financing that doesn't put it on the burden on the taxpayers. You know, it's, it's done by itself, except there's a portion of it that we're going to use one way or the other. So, you know, it, we've used the term guinea pig, but being, you know, a pioneer in, has a potential of some risk, and we're working very hard to try and, and mitigate that risk as much as possible. And Waste Away, to its credit, recognizes that and is, is willing to work with us as opposed to really kind of pushing the envelope on making a profit.
Yeah, so that's why I kind of put those last slides up. Really, you just, if you think about it, we wouldn't put any more money into this than what we would do to build a transfer station. And the private, the private sector is really the guinea pig, if you will. I think we're trying to protect the public funding to the point where we're not. I think we're trying to protect the public funding to the point where we're not, we're not putting the public funds at risk. We're putting the public funds towards the plan B, which is a transfer station if we have to haul this trash to Camden or somewhere at Lewisburg or somewhere else. The, the risk, we're trying to put all the risk really on the private sector investors.
I don't, I don't, I hate to put you on the spot like this. You have researched this way more than any of us have and Craig as well. And do you have any doubt that this is not the right direction to head?
I have no doubt this is the right direction. I, I mean, I've just, for four years now, I have, I have gone, I've read the Tetra Tech reports. I mean, when I asked Waste Away, I said, hey, we need an engineer to come in here and vet your entire process. They've already done it. I've got the report in my briefcase if y'all want to look at it. It's the only process I see that fundamentally transformed trash into a truly beneficial, and it's not, it's not rocket fuel, it's not something outlandish. I mean, I went to Boo, the reason I went to the Boozy cement kiln was to see it get used in the kiln and burned. And talking with Mark Brown, they're going to have a letter of intent from Boozy, I think, hopefully within the next 30 to 60 days to purchase this stuff. So even if the RINs credits don't work, it's still a winner, even if you sell, sell it as a, as a coal or wood substitute to a cement kiln. You just, you just incur the, the.
The process.
They're paying, if they pay $57 a ton, it's going to cost $40 a ton to get it to, to ship it there. So it's still a profit, it's just not as profitable as the RINs credits. So I just don't see, and again, if we're mitigating our risk.
But that still keeps us within the range of what we were talking about on a monthly fee.
Yeah.
If the RINs credits weren't there, we're still within that range.
We are. It doesn't, that's why it kind of showed up there. It's about a $4 per month difference versus a $1 a month difference if we sell it to Boozy versus create the RINs. So I've seen the process and I'm confident in it.
So when it's taken there, that remaining 10%, Waste Away is on the hook.
Yes.
To get it to a landfill.
That's right.
Wherever that may be.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I've got no issue. I think Kirk brings up a viable point, but at the same point in time, I don't see any harm in, in taking this next step. So I would submit and make a motion that we approve this.
Well, and I don't know if we need that.
What are we, what are you asking?
Well, well, actually today I was just giving you information.
Okay, just information.
So that you, so that you could, you could get, we could bring something back to you.
I think it's good, I mean, Austin made a motion, Sean made a second. I think, I'm sorry, I thought you said.
Didn't, didn't see it.
So Austin, sorry, Austin made a motion.
Sorry.
I think it'd be good just for the council to say, we're fine with you. We're not in an approval agreement.
Well, yeah, the next step would be to put together a development agreement and then come back and explain how the entire thing works and address a lot of the good questions.
You need to let them do that first. Because if you ask me today, I'm telling you, no.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we make a motion to approve it. I'm just saying we need to make a, we all need to let them know if we want them to move forward to the next step to bring it, to bring it to us.
Your motion, right?
That's what I'm saying. Go write a $10 million check right now.
And you know what? And on that.
Build it next to Kirk's house, okay?
That was my next question.
You gonna move this out?
How big of a piece of property, how big of a building, where, is this going inside the city? Are we pushing this out there near a county limit? What are we talking about as far?
Well, we've got a site, the 10-year, and I know I don't have it here, but the 10-year solid waste plan, there's, there's a site off Joby Jackson. It's a 22 acre site that we have right off of Butler Drive that we bought for a transfer station location. So I think.
Got other stuff going out there too, don't we?
Yes.
Okay.
We did.
And that's going to be big enough to hold everything?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's why we're, that's why we're, that's why we're designing it.
I have Kirk's address where we could put something.
Well, I think, if you look at the, if you, well, if you, if you look at the Tetra Tech report, they're saying that they only needed about a five acre site, four, four or five acre site if you had it, you know, compact. But I, we will make everything fit on that 22 acres.
We have a motion on table, on the table from Austin to let staff move to the next step.
That I will second.
Motion is second. Mr. Brown, please call it over.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklett?
I have some questions I want to ask after we do this.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Take into account, any next step means that the numbers, the development agreements, all of that has to come to us before we spend a dime on it.
Correct.
If I could add something with respect to the development agreements or any other agreements that we'll be preparing in connection with this project for your consideration, we'll be engaging outside council to, to assist us in that.
So it'll be more than a dime.
Yeah, so I mean.
You need to have that expertise to put it through.
We're at step, I don't want to say we're at step A because you've been working on this for a long time, but we're at step four out of 10 and you've got to get us the information to be able to proceed to anything else.
We've got one more question there.
Yes, sir. Sure.
This is such a no loss, no, I mean, problem. Why aren't every city in, like, everybody that deals with the trash haul off jumping on board?
I've got an answer for you. One, again, in 2019, Waste Away got a EPA designate, it's called a comfort letter from the EPA that classified this material as non-hazardous secondary material, so it did not fall under the federal register requirements as though you were burning trash and you had to go through all the air mitigation issues. It said it's a coal and a wood equivalent. 2019. What happened in 2020? In 2021, you got the COVID thing. Now, the other thing that is something that's just recently, I've dawned on, we've gone from a model from the 70s and 80s and even the 90s to, every county had its own landfill. Now we've got mega landfills. Mega landfills, for in our case, our next one in Camden, it's a long way away, it's one of a few in the state, and they charge whatever they're going to charge. So Waste Management and Republic have a monopoly on the mega landfill sites. It's cost competitive now. The, the cost of trucking garbage 200 miles round trip, this material, now that it has this non-hazardous secondary material, can be considered a coal or wood equivalent, it's, it's, it's marketable. It actually meets market conditions. So I think the historical deal of mom and pop landfills or county landfills compared to the mega landfill site issue and the designation they got from EPA, and then the RINs credits, I mean, these RINs credits just came out of the blue. I think, I think you're going to see these facilities. I think they're coming up. I think we're just right here on, on the cusp. The, the numbers work really good, guys.
Yeah, I'll add to that. Darren, you've put so much work into this and I know we met when I first got elected, but the EPA moves slow and the federal government moves slow, and this is still a fairly new product and, and idea. And not every city in the country is going to adapt to it quickly. And I think it's a, a great opportunity for Murfreesboro to be one of the first and blaze the trail in, in reducing our environmental footprint. I mean.
It's, if you look at the green.
I love you for this hair. That's what I'm trying to say.
I'll say this, the first tenant, the first hurdle we told Waste Away, we paid them the $50,000 to go find a buyer. They found a buyer in Calera, Alabama. Now, we're looking at a second buyer here with Boozy in Chattanooga. So that distance of hauling has gotten cut in half, basically. Now with the RINs credits, which just came in, you saw the article that I think we forwarded you, that BFI, Middle Point, is going to start collecting their gas and purifying it to renewable natural gas standards to make the, to take these subsidizations into account. So every time I, it just, the, the deal keeps getting sweeter and sweeter, right? It's not devolving, it's actually getting better as the more we get into it. That renewable natural gas, you don't have to haul it anywhere. We just got to haul it to our transfer station and you pipe the gas or you put the gas into vehicles.
Let me make a couple of comments, just, the, the thought, we talk about public-private partnerships. I would say, including the county in this conversation, continuing to reach out to them, that, that, that we don't, I understand to get things moving and we seem to be stronger towards this solution and, and I, you know, to get something moving, I understand that. But I think, obviously, the capacity is going to need to have county participating at some point in time, just because they generate enough to fill this spot. So I think including them in the dialogue and seeing if they're, you know, how we can bring that along. And then let me just make this other point, and I have not done the research you have or anything like that, but I heard a suggestion that the county's transfer station in the north part of the county, you know, talking about that and to leave the capacity for them to add on to that facility, you know, at some point in time. Does it make any sense for us to follow that model? Because if this doesn't work, a transfer station, to have this facility that we're talking for conversion, to have it be able to be a transfer station as well, or, or to add that as a part of this Waste Away facility?
Councilman, that's the model we're following.
Okay.
We're saying we're doing a transfer station.
Okay.
Private sector's coming in saying, hey, we, we're going to take it to a Waste Away facility. So we're not putting, we're, we're, if it makes more sense, we're building a transfer station on the south side. Other entities are coming in to upgrade that facility so that they can make a return on an investment.
Okay.
We're not.
I wasn't clear with that.
Well, that's, I understand. And to, as point of fact with the county, I'm going with Mayor Carr and Bishop Wagner to Waste Away facility to let them visit. We're going down there next, next Tuesday? Next Tuesday, I think. And so you're welcome to come if you want to come down there with us on next Tuesday, just to come, come and take a look at this place. But that's where I really want to stress, we're not talking about putting at risk public funds on some cockamamie crazy idea. Private sector can do that for us. We're putting our money into a transfer station.
Hey, and publicly, Darren, thank you, but Chairman Kush is here and Mike, I think you're hearing from all the council members, we want to work with y'all and whatever we can do to bring everyone in, that's, that's what we want to do. Sure?
Sure.
Everybody, I'm Mark Kush, County Commissioner, District 7, and Chairman of the Public Works Committee. Bill, you're exactly right. The county is building a transfer station with this, with the same concept. It hopes that there will be technology that we will love and embrace at some point in time that will build on that property. The transfer station that we are going to intend is just a plan B for when Middle Point closes and we are not stuck with trash over at Kirk Wade's house. That's our immediate plan. It's just a plan B. It's not a long-term, permanent thing, but it's something we've needed for a long time. This administration is, is on board on moving forward with that. Two, two points I want to make that Darren didn't mention. You could put out blue bins in everybody's front yard, which Darren's already mentioned that's several million dollars to do that. But what he didn't mention is, other income potential would be at your transfer station, you could put, before they make fluff or pellets, you can pull those valuable recyclables out at the transfer station. And whether it's a partnership of you splitting the money, Waste Away and the city, you can recover some of those recyclable profits at the transfer station. And they take what you don't need and make their pellets and fluff. So that's an opportunity to make money. And what Darren also didn't mention was, the end product is inert. It's been sterilized. So you could pile it up in your front yard and there would be no damage.
Kirk's front?
Huh? Kirk's front?
Kirk's front yard, backyard and front yard, yeah. So it, it really is.
Put your permission to Kush, sit down.
But it's, it really is a cool end product. So if you have the ability to come next week to the, to the show and tell, please do.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank y'all.
Mayor McFarland, since we talking trash, I still, I got a trashy, trashy question here. On the way here, Mr. Vaughn called me and was talking about his garbage pickup, and I just told him, send me email. He lives in the Brookwood Point subdivision on Moon Half Drive off of Mill, Tennessee. And they're 30, 52 townhomes. And what they want to do is go from using Republic, which is costing them $14,000 a year, to a private pickup with the city. Who do I forward this to or how do I answer this? Are they eligible for city pickup?
You can forward it to me.
Okay.
And then I'll, we'll, we'll look at it.
Okay, his name is Mr. Vaughn.
This brings up like all kinds of.
Deja vu.
All right, thank you, Madam. All right, we'll move into Broad Street redevelopment plan. Who's doing this one?
We have an update on the Broad Street plan that was presented to council a few months ago. I can't remember now exactly when it was. This is the area behind City Hall where fire administration and water and sewers located right now.
I'm going to have to ask you to not be like Rick LaLance and turn on your microphone or talk into your microphone because we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
There you go. Just to turn it towards you.
Oh, it works, yeah.
The microphone works.
Yeah.
That's how a microphone works.
So I don't know where I was, but it's an update on that project, the five acres. And so Mr. Taylor's here to, to give us the lowdown, the breakdown. Matt?
Before Matt gets started, what, what are y'all asking us on this today? Besides the presentation, are you, are you asking anything from an action item?
No, it's not an action item, it's an update. The next step would be a development agreement. So we would be doing the same, you know, putting it all together in a development agreement before we brought it back. Technology's defeated Matt.
Go, okay, man, go to the right under this, this PC on the right. Good. Now, don't use that. Go to, go to the, my left. Yeah, your right, my left. Drop it down and pick up your.
There you go.
Drive.
I was going to get that signature of what that car was.
There it is.
Little Chad fix it for me.
Have you run that?
Mm-hmm.
We need to get, they're very limitation of time.
I've got a, a pretty cool.
If I can.
Should've just asked Mr. Gore to.
You want to like to have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I would appreciate that. I think I would be late to date there, so.
I don't agree with that, Matt. Go on.
So Mayor's the council, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I've got Mr. Rob Porter of HRP with me. The architect could not join us. He actually came down with COVID over the weekend, so we all appreciate him staying away.
Thank you.
As, as Craig said, we do have a brief update on our project that we've termed Broad Street redevelopment. We will come up with a better word if we can get past today. So as Mayor said, as Craig said, it's about seven acres. I'll call it the front. HRP has been developing properties, quality projects in Middle Tennessee for a number of years. The most recent one in Murfreesboro is what we called the Banks. It was over at the corner of Warrior Drive and Highway 99. Beautiful property, right, right against the river there. Actually developed that in conjunction with Lake Mr. Purtle. As far as the design team, SEC as well as Klein Sweeney have extensive experience together. We've probably designed, I'm guessing fifteen to twenty projects together over the past five years. About half of those have been in Murfreesboro and almost the rest of those have been inside of Rutherford County. So they're anything as small as a standalone daycare to something as big as One East College. So we've got a very extensive history together. As Craig said, we did bring this project, I would estimate four to six months ago to the council. It was a draft. We wanted feedback. We certainly got that. And we've spent that time since revising the plan. And so this is a nice little clean snapshot of what those changes are. First and foremost, we've reduced the number of apartments by about thirty percent. The original proposal had about three hundred and forty apartments in the program. Council wanted that number decreased. And so we've reduced that number to two hundred and thirty-nine in the package before you today. Council wanted a higher degree of ownership in the project. And so we increased our number of condos from twenty-five to have a range of at least eighty, all the way up to one hundred. That ultimate number will be determined during our pre-sale activities. Obviously, we want to sell as many as possible, so we're hoping that number's at a hundred at the end of the day. Both of those, the for rent as well as the for sale condos, will be subject to what is called the Hometown Heroes Program. And so this allows us to go out and maybe legally discriminate, if you will, to lower a, lower rent or a lower sales price to local heroes. So that will be fire, police, teachers. So people that are, have been really priced out of living inside of our city if they're new to our city. So we want to recapture those people inside our city. Yes, ma'am.
Matt, can we possibly add veterans to that?
I believe this program is strictly toward the fire, police, and teachers. I can certainly research that, but I believe it is strictly allowed toward that. I think veterans is a completely separate program, Council Lady.
Can you research that for us?
Yes, ma'am, we certainly can. We also had, we had a hotel in the original version. That was in the forty to sixty room size. We were asked to make that more a prominent part of the project as well as increase the size. And so we have completely moved this to make it more prominent on the street. We've also increased the size to be a range of eighty rooms to up to one hundred and fifty. Realistically, we think we'll be in the eighty to a hundred, but we didn't want to cut out that top range of rooms in case we did find an operator that would operate a larger hotel.
Another question.
Yes, ma'am.
On that heroes reduction.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the criteria for that? The people that are included?
As long as they are a policeman, a fireman, or a teacher, they would all qualify.
What about people like me that are seventy and above?
If you're a teacher or a policeman or a fireman, you would qualify. But outside of that.
Little seventy-year-old lady.
We'll certainly let you buy or rent there. Would not qualify for the rent reduction or the sale reduction. Be happy to have you there, Ms. Harris. I mean, move my mom there, y'all can be neighbors. Retail, we did all this and we maintained our, the same size of the commercial space. So all this will be ground floor retail or commercial space that is along each of our streets. We spread that throughout the project. We've also maintained the commitment to self-park on site. So we're not relying on the city's parking garage or a city lot. All of that's going to be contained on-site either through our garages or our on-site parking lots. We also went ahead and lowered the height of the buildings from five stories down to four. There was concern expressed that we were going to block views to City Hall, the historic courthouse. And so we have reprogrammed the site to be lower for that reason. We have also outlined extensive public improvements. And so some of these are roadway improvements such as turn lanes. Some of these are pedestrian movement improvements such as sidewalks, the bridge over Broad, just on a pedestrian scale. We've also, will construct multiple public open spaces and parks with this project. That will be the project doing that. The project will build the bridge over Broad. We are going to leave the design and permitting in the city's hands of both the public park as well as that public bridge. Those are public elements that we think need to be driven by the public realm as far as design and permitting, but we will take on the construction side. We will do a lot of streetscape improvements here that'll be wider sidewalks, nicer streetscape on the trees and the lighting, all to try to promote people to get out and walk in our downtown. The site plan itself, I'll, I'll start at the northern piece, so. Oops. This building right here, that is the standalone hotel now. Originally, it was tucked up along Church Street. It was smaller in nature, parked right beside the garage. So we wanted to make that a standalone. And so that's tucked up right at the intersection of Vine and Broad Street. So a very prominent intersection in our community, one that will help improve. Our drop-off access point for our clientele will be on this side away from Vine Street. That's going to be flanked by a very public, open park, urban park. And so something you'll notice inside of this plan is that all busy areas really are companioned with an open space. While they're compact in nature, they offset the activity zones. And so that's, it's kind of urban development at its core. As we move further south, this is our condo building right here, which completely wraps a proposed parking garage that backs up to the city's parking garage. The green areas on all, all throughout are ground floor retail, commercial. So we've tried to spread that throughout the development so that each building has access to some of that ground floor commercial. As you move away from our condo building here, we've got more on-street parking. We've got amenities between our pool, our dog park, green spaces. This will maintain the access to the city's lower-level parking garage right here. We will be eliminating the access that runs behind Water and Sewer today, but we will maintain access to that lower garage straight out to Broad Street. This building here will be our largest apartment building. It's a hundred and fifty-six units in this particular building. Again, it has a parking garage interior. We'll wrap that entire piece. We'll maintain the access to the city's garage off of Church Street here. And then all of the green, we have lined the entire facade of Church Street with ground floor retail. And then we'll face the entire intersection of Broad and Church with commercial. This intersection will completely transform today. Today, it's a suburban model car lot. We're all very familiar with that lot. Will completely transform the way that looks. We'll start to make this look like a downtown, a very urban area. We're going to have a bridge, we called it the Bridge Park here. And the bridge over Broad, except for this, will just be a pedestrian bridge. And then this will open up to a public park on the other side. This is Town Creek, which is, which the city's going to daylight. And I think you heard some conversations about that earlier from Mr. Huddleston. So again, this feature, this feature, this feature are all publicly designed but privately constructed. And then we'll hop across Church Street. This is a smaller apartment building. There's eighty-three units here. This, again, will be self-parked. So everybody that lives here can park on this side of the street, have their own amenities, not have to walk across the street. We've intentionally brought all these buildings closer to the street to make it feel more like downtown. Today, it feels very suburban. You see parking lot with building behind. This is going to feel like a downtown. And again, we have self-parked on sites. We're not relying on the city's parking garage and really think that this is a good first step to meeting the vision inside the Bottom Study. The amenities, we think the location itself is probably our biggest amenity. You know, we've got a different clientele that wants to either live here or come visit this hotel than wants to be on Medical Center. So we think this opens up a new, new aspect to our city, to our visitors. We're excited about that. We think the public improvements that I mentioned earlier are also an amenity, not only to our citizens or our residents, but also to the city as a whole. We think that one of the biggest amenities here and benefits is just the, the brand-new gateway to our downtown. We think this will start to catalyze other development in the area and continue to see that, not only at One East College, but other properties in our downtown. And it'll bring a much-needed resident, more foot traffic to our businesses that are downtown, not only to the ones that we'll generate and create here, but to our existing businesses, our restaurants, our banks, our yoga studios, all of those. And of course, the affordable housing aspect back for our local heroes, we think that will be one of the largest amenities, much-needed inside of our city. The structured amenity for our residents and our renters here, we have picked those out based on what the market is proving that those, that clientele wants. And so we've got some that are the same between both buildings and some that are different. But both are highly amenitized. These are some of those examples. Some are just the uses that we'll build inside of here. You know, the people that live here want to be close to a restaurant. They want to be close to their local hangout. They want to be close to their barber, whatever that might be. Some want pools, some want yoga studios, some want a gym built in. Everybody wants a dog park, so we've got one of those programmed in as well. We know that the architecture on any urban project where the building makes up the, the bulk of the site is extremely important. And so Klein Sweeney has history in our downtown. They just worked with the county to refurbish the historic courthouse. They were the architects on One East College. They understand the sensitivity and how this architecture needs to look and understand the overall language of the area. So we've got the right design architect on board here. And again, it is a very urban project, so you'll see more compact spaces that are open areas, but they'll be very busy. They're meant to generate activity and energy and bring people out. So they will be different than our more suburban amenity, amenity areas. I would call this a bird's eye view. I have no idea what that word there is, but this is intended to show you how this fits into the area, what the massing looks like, how it relates to the street. We've even went as far as to show you how some parcels around can be redeveloped as it progresses from this project forward. Think it does a very good job portraying that. This is standing at the intersection of Church and Broad. So you start to see how this project can frame our downtown as you come in off Church. You'll see how it changes the view and the intersection with the Bridge Park and the pedestrian bridge over Broad right there. So the project will completely change what this view looks like. This is moving down Broad Street. This would really be where the entrance to City Hall's lower garage is. So to the left would be our condo building, to the right would be our apartment building. So again, a lot of activity, but you've also got green spaces flanking each side or amenity areas flanking each side. And then this is at Vine and Broad. So the hotel will be on the left, the condo building on the right. So again, you can see how the architect has addressed the street in architecture and streetscape and pedestrian zones on all of this, on all the streets within this picture. And this is just a nice, simple 2D cross-section showing how you'll still be able to see City Hall, the historic cupola, all from downtown. All of our buildings will be lower than the heights of those buildings. Phasing of the project, really, some of the project will likely be under construction at all times while the others are. But once we start on site, we're going to be there building until the whole project's built. The first thing we'll start are the garages. And that's because you have to have that up before you can start the vertical that wraps each one of those. We do anticipate that the hotel and the apartment site on the east side of Church Street will be the last ones in this sequence. And then as far as the construction of the bridge and the park, that would really be up to when the city is able to get that designed and permitted. We'll start on that immediately as soon as those are done. And then, you know, we are here today requesting MOU so that we can work with staff to develop a, enter into a contract and then move toward a rezoning. These properties will require rezoning. We anticipate this to be a planned development. So city council will see this project several more times. The pictures I show you here are the building blocks. It will tweak some as you go through the process. There will be some more detail added to the architecture, more refinement, if you will. But these are the basic building blocks. Every time I bring a project to the city, I'm asked, what, what is this doing for the city? I really think this project does more for the city, for the public than most. First of those is it helps the city realize that vision of the Bottoms Study that's so much time and money and effort, people's time, volunteers put in several years ago. It also provides that new gateway into our downtown. It's going to change how we approach, how we view this portion of our downtown. The substantial public improvements that the project will take on that I mentioned earlier. And then it's going to bring that foot traffic, those residents, those visitors to, to the downtown, which is always needed to breathe, to breathe life into our downtown businesses. Probably the most important thing this offers to our community is it's going to provide a high-quality home, high-quality project to those local heroes. It is not making them choose between a safe place to live. It's not going to make them choose lesser quality. It's not going to make them choose lesser amenities. It's not going to make them drive thirty or forty-five minutes to work every day. It's providing them a place in the heart of our city, something I think this council has expressed a desire and a need, and the community, I know, has expressed a need for, for many years now, as our prices and rents have continued to increase. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Rob is here as well, happy to do the same thing. Again, this is, we're asking you to let us enter into a MOU for the purchase of these properties from the city so we can start the zoning process.
It looks like a beautiful project. From beginning to end, are we possibly looking at ten years?
No, ma'am. I think just from the nature of this project, we are anticipating about a thirty-month build, build cycle. And so we would think that we would get under construction sometime in the mid-twenty-three, maybe late-twenty-three season. And so maybe we would hope to be completed sometime in twenty-twenty-six. It's approximately seven point three of what would actually be what I'd call our property. That does not include the public park across the street. That does not include the Bridge Park either.
All right, I got a couple comments. I appreciate the work you've done. It's come a long way from the time you brought it to us to now. I'm going to say a couple things I said then and add a couple things too. I still, as a council for years, we've told staff not to bring us apartments. And now we're talking about an apartment on a city-owned property. So we're, we've gone, hey, it's not okay for you over there, but it's okay for us to do it on our property. It's a great-looking property, but when I think about the vision of downtown, I don't think about a vision of a large apartment complex. I think about Knoxville, Market Square, all those condos. There's not a single apartment complex near Market Square at all. There's hotels, there's commercials, there's lots and lots of condos. We had originally said, hey, we get the condos and apartments somewhere half and half. But the more, the more I've thought about this project, the more I've gone the other direction because of, there's got to be some kind of area in this town that's sacred that doesn't have to be filled with apartments. I mean, we maybe get to a point where five hundred years from now, people are excavating Murfreesboro like historical archaeologists and go, does Murfreesboro stand for land of the multifamily? I mean, we're getting to that, they're, they're everywhere. I'm all for redevelopment, infield redevelopment. I'm all for downtown redevelopment. I think four of us up here have businesses downtown, including me. I would love this project. I love the look of it, but with condos and Class A instead of condos and apartments.
Let me, Sean, when we did the twenty thirty-five plan, we originally.
to be filled with apartments. I mean, we maybe get to a point where 500 years from now, people are excavating Murphysboro like historical archaeologists and go, does Murphysboro stand for land of the multifamily? I mean, we're getting to that, they're everywhere. I'm all for redevelopment, infield redevelopment, I'm all for downtown redevelopment. I think four of us up here have businesses downtown, including me. I would love this project, I love the look of it, but with condos and Class A instead of condos and apartments.
Let me, Sean, when we did the 2035 Plan, we originally talked about having apartments downtown. We tried to get TDK to put their stuff downtown, so we never said we didn't want apartments downtown.
I didn't say y'all did.
I know.
I did.
We're trying, what Joseph A. Lott, when Joseph was here, we just tried to drive people to be, to live downtown. If you look at any other city downtown that's really developed, you look at Franklin, you look at most cities, they're developed because you have apartments downtown, you look at Nashville, they got apartments downtown. I thought TDK just put up apartments in Knoxville downtown.
Not downtown.
I think it is, it's close, it's very close to.
Across the river.
So I think what we have here is a great opportunity to change the corridor of downtown, because if you like it like it is now, it's not a good look.
Like I said, I'm all for...
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just making a statement. So I'll make the motion.
Wait a second. Well, go ahead and make the motion and then move on.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just a comment before.
Something I wanted to add to before I had Bill.
Yeah, I wish I'd thought of this when we met the other day, so you can answer this. How come, how did we get, I love the Hometown Heroes Project, the thought, how did you get to the 5%?
Well, so essentially, sometimes we will work with preferred employers.
Hey, man. Hey, Rob, what you come up with? So sometimes we work with preferred employers and do something along those lines. So we said, was it better to use a 30% reduction for a smaller percentage or a larger group with less percentage? So that's where we came up with the 5%.
Yeah, my thought is, we're basically talking 17 units.
Fifteen apartments and four condos.
A total of 17 units in a 339. The issue is, we're establishing some kind of thing. I love the idea, because you're the first, the vanguard of proposing this higher density and giving something for getting something, and I love that. But I'm worried that in the long term, I'd rather see a higher percentage.
We just felt that the lower percentage with the higher percentage of a discount just brought in, you know, a better feel.
Yeah, I think we did, but we did look at, I think we looked at increasing that percentage to, say, 10% of the units, but only maybe a 15% reduction. And so we felt like, I say "we," that was about five of us exchanging emails, is we felt like the bigger discount made a bigger difference. And we know we're not going to solve all, everybody with one project, and so we felt like the bigger discount, if you had 5% across all projects or whatever that number is, it would eventually start to make a bigger impact.
Is that something that y'all would reconsider, looking at that model over a development agreement, that you may just say, you know, say for example that you had, out of those 14, what was it, Austin, you said?
19.
It's 15 apartments, 293 apartments. That's what I came up with, at 5% is 15, and 80 condominiums at 5% is four. If you go to 100...
I used the 100. My thought was that if you stepped that, maybe if you said, if it's super-successful and you've got that many that initially sign up and say, "We want to buy," well then you've got the opportunity that you could step that to where you could do more of those, I mean, maybe something to talk about.
That might be something we can look into.
Yeah, I think that we can work through that, crunch the numbers through the development program, development agreement.
My thought is, what is it, what's the zoning right now for multifamily, Shane? 23 per acre, what is it, 19 per acre?
So RM16, it depends on where you're at, so there's some MU, which allows up to 25 units to the acre. RM16, which is more of a suburban model, I would say, is 16 units to the acre.
So let's just split the difference. 20 times 7 would be 140 units. And from an apartment standpoint, it's 156 and 83, and 80 condos, so, you know, it's like we're giving up more in terms of units, but only getting 5% for Hometown Heroes. And I appreciate, don't get me wrong, I think it's a step in the right direction, especially for police, fire, teachers, the councilman, scales, her question around veterans. I think it's a step in the right direction. I would like to see it more. I would love to see it at 10% personally. But I do like the project, I do think it will transform the downtown. It's interesting, you know, you've got condos and apartments, and from what I had heard is that, from a financing standpoint, you know, you've got to have both in there in order to achieve it. I guess in Knoxville, maybe they had different developers that were able to get all condos to what Sean had remarked. Can you comment on that around the financing or anything?
Well, so one of the reasons, and our retail, I'm sure will be one of the other comments, we try to keep a balance in a 20% ratio on the retail aspect. Because we aren't condo builders or developers, so we would partner either with another or we can also take those down, but we just know how to build apartments, and we know that we can work in the retail into that as well.
Okay.
So our other concern with the condos is with the interest rates where they're at right now.
Yep.
Is who is that buyer? And as we're moving forward, we're designing, we're spending lots of money to get these things ready to go and start building them, and suddenly we don't have buyers because of the interest rates.
Okay.
I like the group that you have in not being funded, I like that group, but our older generation is really a population that's growing here in Murphysboro. I still would like us to look at the older generation, and if not veterans included in that, make it more all conclusive, I mean, you know, inclusive. I would like us to look at that, because, you know, it's a growing population.
We can certainly do that. I think that we can do that through the development agreement process as we work with staff to get that form work back. I think we can look at that side and we can look at these percentages as well. More than happy to do that.
Tried to look at this sort of with a critical eye, looking, I mean, like what just intrigues me is how this transforms Church and Broad Street, and then how it also transforms Vine Street and South Front Street. Because Matt was being diplomatic, but we spent a lot of time 10 or 12 years ago working on the Bottoms, talking about how the Bottoms was going to transform that downtown area, and then what we found is that no one wants to invest in the Bottoms because no one lives down there, and the current uses that are down there don't lend to people wanting to go into that area. And I don't know that we're ever going to be able to push something to go and relocate down in that Bottoms area without having a development where people are going to live, and it, activity breeds activity. So I don't disagree with what Sean's saying in downtown Knoxville, but I recently started looking for student, two potential students who may need a condo in two years, and the prices for downtown condos in Knoxville are north of half a million dollars. And so, I mean, I hope at some point that gets downtown, but we don't have that right now. The only negative I see in the project is I wish it were closer to downtown, and when I say downtown, to the square, but I mean, where are you going to find seven acres downtown? I mean, it's just not there. So plus, the selfish part from the city is it's taken seven acres that's not on the tax roll, that's not generating anything whatsoever, and allowing that to come back on the, you know, back on the tax roll. And the other part, I would say, and I know y'all haven't talked about this, but, you know, we are at some point going to need more space for different things within our city, and having office space down there that maybe lends to some governmental services may be a good partnership that we don't have to maintain and somebody else maintains that. So I think it's a good start. I think that we're, just like Wasteaway, we're at step four and we need to be at step 44, but at least this is a good discussion for us to move it, to move it along the way. And look, as the council knows, we're going to get killed if it were 350 condos going downstairs, going downtown, or it's 240 apartments or 150 condos. The same people are going to gripe at us because we're bringing more traffic and more development downtown. So, you know, I think there is a huge argument that putting controlled multifamily downtown makes a whole lot better sense, that it's going to be maintained consistently and correctly as opposed to having 350 individual units that are not maintained. So I have no, I don't have a problem with it, or at least starting the process.
Yeah, I'll just make, again, just using the number 20 instead of 16 or 25. Use 20 and 7, that's 140, and we're putting in 239 apartments. So my point is, I would like to see that 5% to be more like 10%. We're giving up a lot, and I'd like to see us help more police, fire, teachers, and veterans if possible.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, one of the reasons we have the percentage of lower, we just don't know how many truly would be interested in the program.
Yeah, that's true, you could have zero, but as long as it's up to...
Yep.
Is that in the form of a motion, Austin?
Well, let me ask one more question just a next. What does a MOU in this portal we committing to, could you kind of explain, Adam?
We don't have the MOU drafted yet.
It's drafting it, but if just allow them to start the process for that discussion to bring all that back to us again.
Yeah, it would be, we'd still have to come back to y'all for approval.
I don't think they wanted to, if six of us or five of us up here were shaking our head no, I don't think that they would waste the time to go to the next step.
Makes sense.
So...
It's going to provide the framework for our contract, I think.
Right. Do you need a motion? Do you want a motion?
You've got to have a motion.
Well, I think we have direction to move forward, so we'll put together an MOU and bring it back to the council.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, yeah, thanks, thanks, gentlemen. You have the July '22 and August '22 dashboard. Questions for Aaron? All right, have one needed to fill, Jamie's seat on planning commission, so Jamie and Sean are staying on planning commission, but recommending Brian Prince. Brian is general manager of a local logistics company, but I tried to find, we had several different people who showed interest that wanted to be on planning commission, but either they were tied toward, tied to development or other political arenas, and so Brian is not tied toward development, not running for political office, just wants to serve the community. And so that's what, tried to find someone really smart that also was not in real estate, and so that's why I'm recommending him.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, or excuse me, Ms. Brown, please, sorry.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaclet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
You have several beer permits, special event permits.
We have three regular permits, one for a new location at 527 North Thompson Lane, an ownership change at 1107 Memorial Boulevard, Suite A, and an ownership and name change at 123 Southeast Broad Street, and there's a special event permit for Rutherford County Chamber for an event on November 8th. All applicants have met requirements for a beer permit and are recommended for approval pending building and codes final inspections. So move.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaclet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any other business from staff?
Mayor, I wanted to introduce our Assistant Finance Director, Leslie Short.
Congratulations, Leslie.
She'll actually be filling in for me next week. I will be out at next Thursday's council meeting.
Excellent. I noticed we pulled the Bubba's Liquors request from the consent agenda, are we supposed to do something on that today, or we pulled it all together?
I just had a note that it was pulled.
It was pulled because he called and rescinded his application. Okay.
So that property, I guess, is not transferring ownership, or...
It's only been on the market for eight years, so...
Okay.
Yeah, he may not be ready.
It was going to be an ownership change, but I don't believe he, the purchase was finalized.
Okay.
Any other business? Counsel?
Having a meeting next Thursday?
Next Thursday, yes, next Thursday, using a meeting.
Stand adjourned.